All right, I've got nine thirty, Jim's here to do our implications.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for your goodness in bringing us all together today. Though we may not know what this meeting holds, we know that you do. As we begin, Lord, help us to keep your word in mind. Lead us in your conversations that are fruitful and enrich the lives of those who are here today. When we are undecided, please lead us into your wisdom. In our opinions disagree. Help us to remain respectful to one another. More than anything, Lord, help us to both seek your will and pursue your glory through all of the human sector. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Great, I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting order at nine thirty-two. We have roll call, please.
Clifton?
Here.
Finch?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
President? Anybody have any thoughts of interest on the agenda today? All right, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Diana, is there a second? Second by Heather, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Department head reports, Mike. Tell us about the bridge closure.
Okay, I'm up here. Got a couple things here for you. I'd just like to submit this to the board as just extra stuff to have. Yeah, all right. Got a little PowerPoint here. We've been very busy at Secondary Roads, one of the things we've been doing is looking at non-bridges, bridges, these structures, and I'll get into this here, we'll get their bridges that are less than twenty feet long, but they're still bridges, and getting our hands on and take a look at stuff. Come across a bridge here, which we do have a discussion on.
Mike, what is pile decay mean?
I will get to the slide here in a second.
You're gonna see it.
So this bridge is located north of Maxburg on, is that two hundred and eightieth? Just right off there. It's currently, it's posted. Existing bridge is eighteen by twenty-four, concrete slat culvert. That's the P term. Constructed nineteen fifty-seven. Has timber abutments or fat balls, piles on the deck, it's concrete. Two thousand sixteen, average daily traffic count is thirty. I have not received the twenty-four count, I would assume that probably will blow up a little bit. This existing bridge is on what we call the farm-to-market system. Looks pretty typical, looks, everything looks really good there. Next slide, please. Maybe not so good here, next slide, please. That is pile decay. All of the pile have come to a point of their life expectancy between loading and grease, saw, side holes, and moisture, that is done. So, there's the other view from the other side, and we are forced to close this. Next slide, please. It's unsafe for traffic due to pile decay. That's your, is that, okay, okay. Bridge life of that style has about seventy-five year lifecycle, so it's kind of the end. Because of the way the bridge is constructed, repair costs really are feasible, they're around two hundred and fifty thousand, and that might only give you about five years of life expectancy. I recommend a solution for replacement. So, a solution for replacement is right around about a half a million, and that, we currently design structures for a hundred-year lifecycle. This is, I actually found the Iowa, used to be called the Iowa State Highway Commission, called now the Iowa Department of Transportation. It was a standard, that happens to be the old standard of that bridge. We don't try to use a lot of wood piling and wood products anymore because the products that we use to treat are not available, so the lifecycle isn't as long. Next slide. Okay, when I talked about, this is a, what do you call it, a non-NBIS bridge, I'm gonna kind of go through this as fast as I possibly can. Federal Highway, federal highway administration has determined that single-span bridges with lengths less than twenty feet are not considered bridges. And they kind of go into another definition there. So, the bridges that we're talking about, we have twenty-eight of these in the county, are inspected by us, and they are part of our bridge system or our records, but they're not required to be inspected and put on the national bridge inspection list. I think we've talked about that before, where we have bridge inspections, so all the other bridges that we inspected, we inspect these ourselves. We have to. We have twenty-eight non-national bridge inspection standard bridges, and here's the bad news, funding for these twenty-eight are very limited to non-existence. Next slide. These, the red, I know the map's kind of hard to see, but those are kind of the locations where we've got these twenty-eight bridges. Next slide, please. Some of this is, you've seen before, these are the different fundings that are available, and you can see that basically, the only thing we can kind of do with this is farm-to-market. May be available with restrictions, and I'm gonna kind of highlight, most of all of our major pavement resurfacing projects, the bigger projects like the one we did at Maxburg and the one we have coming here on the Cummings Road, that comes out of our farm-to-market account. Next slide, please. The farm-to-market account is from gas tax, registration fees, excise tax, unbilled rentals. We receive about a million dollars a year to go towards farm-to-market. That kind of depends on how much people are driving, so that fluctuates a little bit. It can only be used on farm-to-market roads, it can be used for construction currently as our obligations are, so I'm counting everything that we have up to a January letting of twenty twenty-five, we will be a negative three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand. So we're about negative point three-five in the hole. Okay? Now, there's restrictions with this, I'll just paraphrase this real quickly, is you can borrow ahead, okay, but we can't exceed the years to borrow ahead. So, basically, what this does is we could fund this or get this thing going for replacement, however, that takes away from all the other projects that we've kind of got going in. So, we're looking at resurfacing out of the road, so we're using the farm-to-market money in conjunction with federal aid money for like, let's say, Pitts Road, or Demme Park Road, or any of the things out there. And I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time with these, I can kind of recite some of these slides.
My thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we borrow the watershed funding that seeped or percented up to five hundred thousand as using non-coolant dilution source?
Um, I don't know exactly. I don't know how that would work into the total project, but there might be something with a project that maybe some of that could be available. I will have to look into it.
It was up to five hundred, wasn't it?
Yeah, up to five hundred. Yeah, which, we're gonna kind of go, did we, did you skip two of them? Okay. Development projects, no, that's all right. This is right from an instructional memorandum that DOT puts out, and even if you had the money secured right now, you're looking at about four and a half years to go through basically the environmental concurrence. It's the second line down there, it takes time to get all the permits, go through all the studies, have to be done for a project like this. So, just keep in mind, if everything goes good, you're looking at about four, four and a half years, if we would find things that would maybe slow down environmental processes or permitting processes, that timeframe could be a little longer. Again, that's if we have the money secured. Next slide, please. So what are we gonna do next? Well, I don't like sitting around with this stuff. I think we're gonna get out and get a preliminary field survey, we're gonna come up with a preliminary design solution. I would recommend, let's try to get this thing scheduled in a five-year program, and at least get it ready to go for some sort of replacement. Again, it might sit in the five-year program for longer than five years, but at least if something comes through the pipe, and let's say there is funding opportunities available, then we strike one iron, hot, move on, instead of just saying, oh, there's no money for it.
So like congressional?
Could be, could be, something. Next slide, please. Okay, so the thing to remember also with all this is, and we've seen, I brought this slide here before, is these are all our national bridges that are longer than twenty feet. So we have two hundred and ten of those, and if you look at our graph up there, thirty are good, ninety-five are fair, and the rest are poor. So, we have to stretch this money that we receive over all of these type of bridges, and it can be, you know, a task. Next slide, please. Couple things to remember with bridges, when we take into consideration of what we're gonna try to replace, is a sufficiency rating, detour land, you know, just things to remember. Condition of inspection, you know, we can have a bridge, well, this is a prime example. This bridge at one time was legal loading, and then we monitor what's going on out there, and then we'll lower the posting tonnages on it and vice versa. Unfortunately, this bridge is done. So, there's a lot of things with bridges that go on, on the replacement cycle, and what's going on. Next slide, please.
What kind of detour is this going to be for these farmers?
It's about a mile and a half up around in another bridge that's not posted. Other factors, you know, I kind of, this one here, repair cost probably not practical for, and just some other things that has to do with it.
Can you put a culvert in there and just?
Well, that's, that's, that's one of the things we have to get to and see if the designed solution, if that's possible. The thing with a lot of these bridges that are around as twenty-foot size, I'm just speaking in general about doing a study on it, is you could put culverts in it, but the design frequency might be a little less, in other words, water might go over the road more. The other things a lot of times happen with culverts is you're constricting the waterway a little bit, so the outlet velocities might be a little higher, and then you're into corrosion. Even if you can design a culvert that, let's say it doesn't have those, and let's say it's a multiple-barrel culvert, so say you put four culverts, or, you know, four ten-foot diameter culverts, and say those go. You run the risk of debris, let's say clogging one of those openings. Those are just, those are things about culverts, culverts are great solution, and that might be one of the solutions we have to do here. But, again, we're quite not at that point, and that's what we're gonna try to be next, figure out what's gonna happen. Next slide, please. Funding, you know, you could put stuff in the five-year program, even if the farm-to-market, if something would happen, that, I can go back, and my experience is like when we had the Gulf War, for example, our farm-to-market funding was gross. It was just the way things happened. So, things could happen on a larger scale that we're not in control of, even if we had it in the five-year program, it could be longer than the five-year program, it doesn't get allocated until year one, so the next year. Next, that's kind of things to remember about that. Any other, next, please. All right, this is Mike. If I have to put you to sleep now, we've seen this before, hit the play button, I love this, you guys are gonna tell me don't bring this in. You have sound?
I'm so sorry.
So, I like this because it's like drive the, I'll drive the boy home. Anyway, that's my attempt at humor, that's why I'm not in the meeting. Any questions? I know I threw a lot of stuff at you.
Will you get this, like a summary or something on the, on your website or on social media, explain, you know, all of this, so the public understand that this bridge may not be open?
I'm gonna put out, actually, we're working on now, send a letter to the adjacent landowners to say that this is probably gonna be.
If you don't lately look at these filings?
Yeah, yeah. And I can post some things to the website for that. It is on, it is not explained in great detail on our certification system, but that went out last week, I had to go off, it's just, it's not safe, something's getting hurt.
What kind of erosion do you have out there?
You know, there is stream erosion, everyone is there, you know.
What if we approached the DNR with the Northern Middle River Watershed, and that could be one of their projects?
You know, there's, yeah.
They all have money, they want to allocate out, I don't know, like in Avenue. It'd be one of them too. It was so wishy-washy when we, us that attended the meeting, I don't think they know it, but they have a lot of money, they have, have no interest loans, and they want to showcase and create, I don't know, it's just a reach, but it'd be worth reaching, I'm asking.
Michelle, I have two last slides.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
After the questions?
Yeah.
I saw some.
I apologize for taking up more of your time, as I tried to go through this as quick as I can. I'm also, while we're waiting here, is we're in the two-year cycle of our other bridges that are being inspected, and I see, we'll start seeing reports probably in October, to remember in December come in. Remember those numbers we had up there? That's another thing to keep in mind, is we might find something else that's out there, and we may be having this conversation some more.
Well, and you look at the, the farm-to-market projects that are on our five-year plan, remember, you, coming highway, that's supposed to get.
Yeah, it's gonna be left, Jason, for plans about.
So you've got that, which affects a lot more than thirty people with it.
Yeah, that's right.
And then you've got other pavement projects, you mentioned Pitts, or I think that road from ninety-two down to Pamela.
That's right.
At some point, you know, there's still, there's some other.
It's a balancing act.
Yeah, so if there's alternative funding, no, but those are generally million-dollar projects versus half-million.
Right, right.
So it doesn't kick them down the road too far, but it does affect.
Right, so the good news out of this, and I've mentioned this before, is the Pitts Bridge Replacement, we're receiving some state money for that, so that helps, that helps, that helps put money forward, just exactly like you said. We've also received some congressional money for the Demme project, so that helps, it helps us, anything that we can get outside of that helps, because we have quite a bit, quite a bit of stuff. Sean, this is just the resolution, that's the notification that went out, things to remember. That's kind of why, we kind of already talked about that, is we've got other bridges and other projects that are there. It just takes time. I mean, it took time to get to this point, so it's gonna take a little bit of time for us to get it placed. Hopefully, we can go from that to the next slide, to something maybe not as big, but something, a nice project like that, that's got a hundred-year lifecycle, and then people aren't gonna have to worry about things, so. That's all I have, I appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Mike. Can we get news worth it?
I'm sorry, yeah, we do. Like I said, we're, this has been a kind of a busy couple of weeks with a lot of different stuff. I'd say, the office has been trying to get out to these larger structures, get our hands on it, see what we've got to look at. Maintenance staff is in the process of kind of finishing stuff up, this hall's coming, and so we're working on that, so. We are going to submit, we have, remember, we have a grant for a hundred thousand dollars worth of signs from the Southwest Iowa nine-one-one. They're going to pay for the sign materials, so we can replace all the green and white street signs, and that's, that's good news.
That's huge.
Because that's, that's more money than we can put to our township sign replacement program. In fact, I think we're down to Crawford now, where we are trying to replace stop signs, stop aheads, curves, kind of the essential signage out there. If you drive around on some of the mer, a little day, it'll ruin the me. So there's, that's some good news. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, we've reached the public comment portion of our agenda, anyone from the public wish to comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations, Jeremy, you're up next.
Can I get up here?
Please.
I'm sorry, I should probably.
You got a strong voice.
Thank you for having me today. So as you probably remember, about three years ago, I approached this board about supporting as an applicant for a community development block grant for a project to renovate much the interior of the Turning Point Innovation Building, which is on the square near Merced. And I appreciate that the board was willing to do that, and maybe with a little bit of reluctance, and which is understandable, and because it doesn't directly benefit the county to do so. But I will be happy to say the project, well, took way longer than it should have, is now complete, and the construction work has been done. There's about three hundred and eighty thousand invested into that property, most of it you're not gonna see from the outside. But the building is an improved building from what it was, and should be a building that serves the community well along in the future. The reason why I'm here today is because, A, to let you know the hill is completed, and answer the questions we have about it. We also, because of, we didn't spend all our administration funding, I wanted to submit an amendment along with the draw, for the final draw, which is under agenda for the, to move a little bit of the administration money to the construction side, so we don't miss out on some of the grant. So all the grant that spent a word with the project can come into the county, and instead of going to submit a project elsewhere.
Do those people will pay with that?
Uh, they should, I mean, we have to submit the amendment letter, and then, of course, say we either approve it or don't approve it. Every time I've done this in the past, they approved that, because they don't want to send the money back to the HUD either.
Is that because the, it went, guys went over, it says current budget two fifteen, actual budget two seventeen? Is that why you moved it, so it would feel wash?
Essentially, so our admin fee was seventeen thousand, we didn't spend all that.
So you guys keeping under budget on projects?
Correct.
Our office did.
Requested to be reallocated, so more to go to the construction side, because that was higher than the election.
Now, Jeremy, just so people understand, the county didn't fund this, we're just the pastor.
Correct.
So where it says local funds, to Diane's point, where did those money come, where is that money?
All from Turning Point, their own, wherever they get their money, I don't know if they have a loan or what they.
So we were just the administrative pastor, helping?
Correct.
All right, you have anything else, Jeremy?
Thank you, led to bring this project to an end, it's been a long three years. Right, I guess the only other thing I have, if there's other projects that need us to work on, for you folks, not for other people, but just give us some money.
You could get us a new ambulance, Jeremy.
Or a new bridge. We are working with Brady at that one, trying to find money for that, so there is an outstanding FEMA grant that is funded, basically funded, and now it's not likely it's gonna be funded, but.
You got it, right.
Bridge, that's, that's tough. All right, thank you, folks.
All right, thanks, Jeremy. Okay, Ben.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you remember, about five months ago, I was in here talking to you guys about the AED project, putting the fibrillators outside the courthouse. Just wanna give you guys an update on that. We have, since then, you had asked that Brady go in, take a look at those and see if they would be compatible with what they use, and I know he's not here, but he did take a look at them, and we talked about some other options that they have as far as units, and he thought the unit that we put at the football field would be perfect for anywhere around town, so. We have ordered three new units, they should be coming any day now, and one is going up to the softball fields at the school, and then the other two I'd like to put at the courthouse, if you guys are okay with going forward with this. As a reminder, the lines covered the cost of the units, and what we're asking is for the county to cover the maintenance, which is about six hundred dollars per year. Once we get these three units installed, I'm also gonna work with Brady to get some tree chains put out there for the public to know how to use them, and also where they're located at as well.
Are you thinking outside?
Yep, they are outside units, they just have to be connected to power somewhere, so.
They're almost as big as a curb in New York.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, a little bit, maybe a little wider, but if you've seen the one at the football field, it's about five foot tall, and temperature-controlled, video-reported, contact nine-one-one immediately.
But when our maintenance fee, we just call somebody, they make it, and we pay for it?
You don't actually have to call them, so it's, it covers the replacement of the pads, replacement of the unit, any maintenance to the heating problems or cooling problems that they have, it covers that, they monitor it twenty-four-seven, so that's what that maintenance program is, is basically it's twenty-four-seven monitoring and taking care of it if something's wrong. If the unit gets used, then whoever, you know, we talked to Brady about this, they'd probably be responsible for replacing the pads, but if it's just sitting there and the pads are bad, then it probably covers the pads.
And they do, so we would have to provide obviously the power source?
Yes, yes.
So what, the data part, are we going to see?
Depends on where you might, might put them. Ship, do you ship the issues with that? Do you have any thoughts on where might be a logical place from visibility and electric access?
They're not drilling it anywhere.
Just want it on the courtyard, or you want it on a building, or where?
Wherever it works, I mean, more away from the courthouse, like out in the open, people are gonna see it a little bit better, but obviously, we have to have the power source, so.
We have power at all offices, we have a danger to say that's for, that there is power, and we should help those for our lines.
Well, a corner post might be a good spot.
Could we hook it into the city and just work our deal? I mean, we'd have to, ask the city, and we wouldn't be used to, maybe we're just.
I'm just thinking, where those, when you said posts where lights go, you mean where those green towers there, right? You know, heated office at corners there, that would be a pretty, pretty good visible location, and you'd have power there.
And that would be our call or the city's?
Our, that's ours.
I, that one, if you're a solution.
I think the last time you were here, we were generally acceptance of this, now that we're getting down to the mini degree, when do you expect these to show up?
We ordered them at the end of July, and it usually takes about six weeks, so we should be seeing them here pretty soon.
Do you think there'll be an extra cost to have that set up?
Yeah, I think we probably need to get a resolution in front of us to formally approve it, but I, I think.
Is there any extra cost to, you know, maybe connection? Well, you'll have to, you'll have to dig something, they'll come up, you want a cord in there.
We'll have your electrician walls.
See how much it'll cost, is it six hundred per unit for maintenance?
Yes.
And that's just a yearly payment, and they just?
I don't know if it's yearly or monthly.
Or quarterly?
Yeah, I, I think it's CP annual, I think it's six hundred annual, but I can check on that.
So should we get a resolution to approve that, plus making that chip figure out the cost to, yeah, and you could work within this, require what kind of connection you'll need, because that should probably include that as well. We need to know the cost and the cost of that.
So I can, I can tell you with, the one they put in the high school, they cut a little panel out of the back end of the unit, and it has the wiring, and they just connected half of an extension port to it, and they plugged it right into their outlet there.
Sounds like they should be pretty simple.
Yeah.
Chipper, you and Ben can coordinate that, that would be good, with something.
Yeah, let's break that, we want the six hundred dollars yearly, and the cost of what? We, we don't need a budget.
All right. Sounds good, thanks, Ben.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, next we have the third consideration, third reading of the amendment, the solo ordinance, basically put a moratorium in place until that can be, that resolution can be revised. Do I have a motion to approve the third and final reading? Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Diana, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Nay? Okay, motion carries. All right, approving auditor's office, giving them authority to administer longevity for county employees, Emily, is this kind of like what you and I talked about the other day?
Yeah, so essentially, if you are a second deputy, you fall under the union, so you're eligible for longevity, and this just gives me, this gives payroll the ability to just do that without a resolution, so that, maybe that's one less thing to park. So that, maybe that's one less thing department heads have to monitor over time, so that's basically all it is.
So that means, Emily, just to be clear, I'm a union second deputy.
Right.
And the union automatically, I get that four cents an hour longevity, so without me, it's just a, that's a union contract.
Yep.
So you're, it just allows you to just do it in your payroll, rather than go through a resolution.
Right.
It is a union contract.
Yes, it's within the union guidelines, and you have to do that. After that year, you receive longevity, so you work a year, then you get your four cents per hour. So this just says that I can add that on there.
So you're just going to program that in as an automatic, so?
It's something that I'll just be able to input, so instead of having to, you know, if a resolution gets missed and having to deal with back pay and stuff like that, this just makes it, so that is not an issue.
Okay.
That seems straightforward.
Yeah. And the state auditors want something showing any pay increases, so then this should cover that for when they come audit the files and look at stuff like that, so they'll see this.
So going forward, none of the department heads need to worry about that anymore?
If they want to do it, obviously, department heads can do whatever they wish, so they may submit that to me, but if they don't want to, then it will be taken care of.
Well, this will be cleaner, wouldn't it? It's a lot, you know, maybe they have access to all the start fees, it just makes us so much.
That makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Emily.
Okay, motion to approve. Motion by Diane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is a supervisor resolution approving mandatory attendance for retaliation and rescue training by employees of the following departments, zoning, secondary roads, EMS, EMA, VAC, supervisors, and veterans' affairs. Kelly, you want to talk about this briefly?
Sure. This came out as a super committee meeting, and there was just concerns whether employees knew what to do, if they had a concern of grass and retaliation, so it just kind of snowballed from their knowledge of power, putting that information out there, and letting folks know that we deserve that policy.
I think that makes sense, my question, which I asked earlier, is not everyone's going to be able to attend it. Somebody's going to have a conflict, then they go on vacation, whatever, whatever. It sounded like we have a bad plan for it. How are we going to monitor and make sure that people knew that?
I'm just, for the day of, I'm going to sign a sheet, we're going to have a video, and then as new employees come on, we'll ask them to do that.
Kelly, is there any way, if they can't make it, that they can do an online one and print out the certificate?
Yes.
So that they know we took it.
Yes.
And the present, I think you have to pass a test in, and I can go on.
I'm working that out with the rest representative, but I'm, yeah, we're going to do it on the second floor courtroom.
So my other question is, EMA and Veterans Affairs, they both report to the boards, so is that something we can require, or is that something the boards have to require?
Um.
Because they technically don't report to us.
I guess.
Yeah. That's a good question. So that's my only concern, I don't want to, I don't want to do it out of turn, I mean, the other ones report to us, obviously, but the other two, I'm wondering if we should remove those until, and then include them in the strongly encouraged, because we really can't.
Veterans Affairs, we have a concern about, it wouldn't develop the.
Well, no, I'm saying technically, though, it doesn't support to us, the ones from board, and I don't want to overstep onto the board's board, so.
You're talking about two employees here.
We can leave them on until we ask.
I would, I'd be more kind of, leave them in, and, yeah. Okay, sorry.
I'm just bringing it up because technically, we can't acquire anything without the board approval, so. I don't see their boards having an issue with it, it's just a technicality, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, really, there is.
Yeah, no.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Motion by Diane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is a resolution appointing compensation board members. I've mentioned Rethmeyr, R-E-T-H-M-E-I-P-R.
Again?
And notice, what I've said on that is our appointments, which, one's a two-year, one's a four-year term. We've got people that have served in those roles.
They're above, I believe.
They're existing.
Oh, they're, okay, nevermind.
They're above.
Okay, all right, sorry.
It's different.
Got it, I missed that. So, grab a motion to approve.
Some.
Motion by Diane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather, any further discussion?
Regarding the vacant chair auditor's office, are we, are they just going to meet without that person being there, or what's?
Whatever.
That's what I think.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is a resolution approving, setting public hearing for FY twenty-five budget amendment on September twenty-fourth. Is there a motion to approve?
So. That's all right.
Motion by Heather, second by Diane, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So supervisor resolution regarding the CBDG, CBBG grant that Jeremy spoke of earlier, do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Motion by Diane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the next one is a resolution allowing, granting this, supervisor granting approval to commission several items.
I went through, I went down the basement, and those two clock faces are down there, and that door that we had down in the round door, they'll get broken or gone, or something happens to everything, so I think we should, clock faces are one of the pieces.
Are those the white ones?
They're white, they're not original, but they're cool, you might want.
Somebody might want to do something with them.
So he is going to, like, put them out there and sell, or?
That's what I want to talk about, now, we made out the old wooden ones that, to me, look like the top of a.
If they can be taken out now.
But they sold for a thousand dollars, sold each, so, I mean, we'll take it.
Never know if people will find that.
No, and then the door, and then, I don't, this bothers me to open rooms, and it's absolutely packed full of stuff.
Were we planning on keeping that rounded door, though?
I don't know what we would do with it, if you, what would you do with it?
Display it?
Wear. And it needs refinished terribly, and it's getting.
Because I can also, maybe I misremembered, but Jared, not one that we might want at the.
It's not original, but I'll ask Jared.
They have one of the original clock fixes.
Yes.
Did we talk about using that rounded door as part of the donor plan?
Oh, that's not a what?
The donor plan.
That's a neat idea.
And we can display that in the hallway somewhere. We can, you know what you do is we can display it under one of the stairwells.
We'd have to ask.
It'd be out of the way, out of the way, and we're tricking on it.
It's going, you're going to have to have a lot of upkeep if you put it out, real exposed, because it's.
Well, I'm thinking about inside.
Inside, I, not outside.
Once, once somebody refinished it, it's not, it isn't.
You're going to put little flags on it?
I don't know, just throw them, just throw them out.
It's a good idea, I don't know. Pull that past shipo, as a banner, a banner, so, I don't think so, I'm okay with putting the door there.
Can you talk to, to, to him about that?
I will. Okay, let's just take the door off, and I'll find out, and I can maybe get somebody to.
My final observation, we really need a resolution to throw away a three-inch.
They're all, I just said, I was like, no. The reason I put them on is because they're all new, so if, if it's okay, I will take them to Chris or something, because they're new, they've never been used.
Are we going to publicize these releases, because some people may want the chairs and the tables?
Well, I think we should sell them, because they're really, some of them are cool.
So this is just the first step for us to.
This is what I would.
If it's okay with you, how do you want to proceed? Do you want a garage sale? Do you want to sell them a covered bridge? What are you going to do? The door, we'll, I'll ask somebody to make that into a donor plan.
I would think we could put it on a website, a list with pictures, and have people, you know.
Online bidding did not work.
Sorry?
The online bidding didn't work for First Bank Chorus.
No, I'm not saying bidding, I'm saying just laying on the website, so people can see what's available, and they can say, hey, I'll buy that for.
You know, Facebook Marketplace is a pretty good place to sell stuff. I know what you're going to offer price, and some, anything better than nothing, right?
Because, you know, you know, people, you know, homeschoolers, like, you're interested in chairs and tables, you never know.
The tables are the really, really heavy ones.
They're not running out. What about the chairs, are those the solid ones?
They're the neat ones that are in our office, but they're all the public health, and there are a lot of desks out there, because when I had the garage sale, all this stuff moved left, I couldn't get anybody to carry them up the stairs, so there's still a lot of them down there. They're the big old heavy desks.
Okay.
But they don't want them, and we just.
I'm just saying, you never know, something you might be interested.
We can put them up, and, yeah, sure, I can do face-to-face, I don't know how to do that, somebody can help me.
What, your grandkids can probably?
Probably, probably the ten-year-old.
All right, if nothing else, we have a motion to approve. Motion by Diane, is there a second?
Oh, if you want a note, I'll take the door off.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next one is a resolution approving enclosure of the bridge that Mike spoke of earlier. So I have a motion to approve.
So.
Motion by Diane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next resolution is a treasurer's resolution appointing Aaron Stanton as a universal deputy. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Motion by Diane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather, any further discussion?
Is Aaron, is this a part-time or full-time?
Full-time.
He's looking for part-time.
Hey, there's no other discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple temporary lieutenant wine permits. Any reason you can't prove those together?
I'm okay with it, I'm fine with that.
We have a motion to approve the two temporary lieutenant wine licenses.
So moved.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Diane, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, board member reports, do you have anything to report on this?
Well, mine's pretty short, Diana, I'm pretty sure. I had an NPO policy meeting, we had a zoning meeting to review the, I intended that, to review the comprehensive plan, not mobile work, you don't want to get down there. We also, in Iowa Workforce Board meeting, we discussed amending the current contract for the chief elected officials agreement. I don't know if you guys know, but Steven Orton lost his prime rank, so he no longer be the chair, and so they're going to elect him chair, and I'll be probably out of it soon, but yeah, so he's a, yeah, he's a good guy, so he'll be finishing up, obviously, the year, but yeah, so. But anyways, so somebody else will be taking over for that. I was pretty much, I'm a mature meeting tonight, and that.
The mature out here is absolutely running out of space. And that's starting to turn things down.
And they already are.
They already are. They're turning it on its day.
Okay. Mine are pretty short and sweet, too, I didn't have much of these last two weeks, I do have a CICS meeting on Thursday afternoons, I'm not sure if the RFPs helped that yet or not, but the little districts on that, I expect that to be an interesting meeting, but that's all I've got.
Well, I had a lot, I participated in a Bible marathon, which is nice, at historic preservation, North Middle River watersheds, and Mike and Steve attended, and that's really interesting, something I'm going to try to happen, too. I had an emergency management meeting, and that was an interesting meeting. We had Max Bird there to absolutely sing all praises and Dio's praises, because Surlock hit a line, and so Max Bird had no water for a long time, and Dio was amazing. Hinterland was also present, and they said, they thanked us profusely for letting them, Dio has to take, we even be there on his own, but they were very pleased, so that was nice. We had an OIT new age task force meeting, we received two applications, and we're going to ask them to come back, these two people, these two candidates. I'd like to thank for sure roofing, James Line Weber, we have that air conditioner on the west side that runs water down on the building, it looks terrible. And I asked James, you know, if I think I had to, because when you've got that lived up there, would you guys fabricate a tray? And they did, and they did it at no charge to us.
So nice.
So now we have that.
So the company goes?
It goes out, it's pushing it out more into the yard.
I thought we were on the other side of the building.
Other side of the building. So, yeah, so that was really nice of him, nice of him, and that's why.
All right, very good. Any other old business? Any new business, cameras, record out? Walk me through that.
I think we've been upgraded us moving forward, have cameras on each quarter dome, we have issues, so kids jumping up and down on the downspouts, along on the northeast corner, and I pull it up, or two more times, it's going to, and it's already, like, two thirds collapsed. And it also cover us, and they have somebody that run people off standing on the wall, taking pictures on the ramps. If we upgrade the system, it's going to give my department and the sheriff department the capability to check the cameras from the phone. Our system is sixteen-years-old available. So the whole cameras in the building, too, if we want the whole.
It's sixteen-years-old, I thought it was during my term that we installed it.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't get a quote from the company that did these here in the eyes?
Well, I could give them a quote of theirs.
Because then we can link the systems.
But this is adding to the existing system, right?
So are you adding, or you're adding a whole new company? Is that because it's?
They do a business exam, and it's.
So it's local and then?
So.
Well, I think we should go out, get bid, and then at least three bids, twenty-eight thousand dollars is a lot.
Well, I think we should talk to our current vendor, too, and see what they can do as far as.
I'd like to.
Think of what we've got, maybe.
I know some of it, because the ones in here, so I could talk to them.
That was the one that I was just waiting for, out, that was why they reached out to and put, I would jump on.
I'd like to get, I'd like to see three bids, I think when we did these, we got three bids as well, in here, the ones in there.
Got two.
Well, let's do, why don't you get two more? So, yeah, just give two more.
Sounds good, thanks, Chip. Courthouse exterior projects, don't we have our final meeting schedules, is that correct?
Yes, and the south doors were great, we had a whole bunch of people through them. The windows, Rick was here, and they're going to, I think we placed the bottom sash in line
The windows, um, Rick was here and they're going to, I think we placed the bottom sash in line by your desk, because they did get up there, even pushing up the top, it just doesn't line up, and sometimes that works. So they're going, Rick was here, I think that's been replaced.
Um, cause there was two, two windows.
Yeah, they know, they know.
Are they replaced both?
Um, do you remember? Yeah, both of them.
Okay.
And, and he's calling the window company, um, let's see, what else? We have everything.
So where they at? Where are they at, the dentals, are they done or?
They're done and they both completed.
And they finished painting?
They finished painting, I think, um, I wasn't here, but I think Rick's been here, correct? Cause he kinda went up and down a lot.
Cause of that?
Yes, because I said when they're done with the corner, I wanted to approve and I wanted to meet you. I don't wanna, wait, yours? Well, I don't sure, I don't think they took pictures. I don't know, we can ask for a fifty-two.
I would hope you would take pictures.
What's that meeting, is that number six?
Yes. Um, I'll ask Rick for fifty-two pictures, or James did.
Okay, excellent. Comp plan revision.
So, we, as you know, we can't take any action on the comprehensive plan until the zoning board comes back with a recommendation report. Um, they spent quite a bit of time on the last meeting they had going over that. Um, and they did not, I hope they, they had enough time to do so. So I'm assuming they're gonna do it their next meeting in September?
Yes.
Um, do you have any other updates on that?
We spent a lot of time, um, there was some RBC in, under, under most of the zoning districts that were related to mobile homes, uh, which brought up conversation about RVs. They've been, been discussing that quite a bit. I think it was just purpose, it was added by the vendor, uh, about the mobile homes. Not really having the ability to approve them in any district. Uh, we did remove that, um, that mobile homes here and they wanted to continue to be able to permit mobile homes uh, in, in any of those districts. Obviously keeping mobile home parks in sites and limits. Other than that, those were the main focuses, a lot of, a lot of time to spend on those.
They're doing, uh, they're doing diligence, just really, you know, making sure we go over in detail.
Quickly some.
Like, I appreciate it greatly, cause they're seeing things, like, when we did our committee meetings, we barely touched on mobile homes. And for them to appear in there, I think it was just boilerplate, and I'm glad they gave some good feedback. Brenda has excellent feedback, so, um, I think it's gonna, they're gonna be making recommendations that will strengthen.
This is something that we should kind of talk about. Somebody in the U of D that's been, uh, working with you guys from the beginning, and I, um, she mentioned that when county conservation board and, and they do, they really do diligence and they show us what is effects and it's a butterfly corridor or whatever it might be, or it has native grasses or wetlands. That even if our zoning, and I'm not sure legal if this is correct, but even if our zoning doesn't specifically say we can't do it, we can revert back to a comp plan, that it might not be a good idea, because I think the public feels like when, when they bring us all this information and we vote it in, we're not paying attention. I, I think that, I've kind of displayed to you, I think that's somewhat true.
Well, um, I think we could put in, when we do the ordinances, we can put in there that we can add those to consider, cause right now that language, I can't get my mind wide, Brian, it's only the board of adjustment, the rest of the board of adjustment, they have to point. They have, in order to give a, a variance or a condition use permit, looking to the comprehensive plan is one of those, is a consider. I don't, for, sort of comes to supervisors, I don't think that that's
Well, where the
Currently.
Looking at current, looking at the comprehensive plan, you guys can't look at it?
Well, to say to work and deny it.
I think it's a working document.
I do too, I do too, and I think
But our current comprehensive plan doesn't mention anything about court orders or anything like that.
Not specific to court orders, but I think, I mean, when I write a recommendation or, or report, I'm referring to that which I'll under you guys, so I think it's, it's usable by any county.
The information is there.
And when she brought that up to me, I've really thought about that for a week. I, I think it's true, I think they go hand in hand and we should have used them, because if he, if Steve Pearson comes to us and these are like native fans or, or maybe groups of, um, fairy grasses, we really should, I think we really have to take that into consideration, some of that. Or it is a corridor for migration.
So you're saying we can, like, before we approve, maybe make a conditional, a condition on it?
Well, I, no, I think we can
Or does it prove completely?
I think we can use, like, I said, use the comp plan with the zoning. And the, the zoning isn't specific, the comp plan might cover that maybe we shouldn't approve it. Am I saying that right?
I hear what you're saying.
Yes.
We just have to be careful though.
You don't want to beat yourself in the door.
Right, cause ordinances are technically the law. And comprehensive plan is guidance for those that want exceptions to the law.
Well, it's the will of the people too though.
Yeah. True, but, you know, they have, I, we just have to be very careful, it's a delicate balance between property rights
I agree with that.
And comprehensive plan, so, and that was one of the concerns that many people brought up, is they're very, they're, they're fearful that we're gonna basically legislate them out of their property rights, so, it's, and, and this is a conversation that committee had, that zoning staff, it's a delicate balance, we want to be careful.
It's not eating dust, I just tried going over the history, cause if you kind of go through the same thing, or they deny the thing because we wanted to sell them, it's all, you know.
But nature's a delicate balance too, and we're always kind of in a circle and pretty stark rate with some of this, I think we could have some really catastrophic ideas.
I don't disagree, but it, it really needs to be in ordinances if you wanna have control.
I think, I think we have to, we can't ignore the comp plan for the, after we did ordinances.
And not everything can be black and white, no matter how bright you do your ordinances, there's still gonna be some gray in there.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's all, I thought it was interesting, something you should think about.
Good point. Okay, anything on ordinance reviews? No, can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Diane, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you everybody.